Come to our city council meeting. Madam Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Mr. Bozen.
Here.
Mr. Nichols.
Here.
Ms. Creighton Smith.
Here.
Mr. Childs.
Here.
Mr. Simon.
Here.
Ms. Wilder.
Here.
Mr. Foyce.
Here.
Right, please join me in a moment of silence. All right, thank you. The pledge this evening will be led by War Two Council member Dave Bozen.
Thank you. Would you please remove your hats and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion for the approval of the agenda with an amendment. I'd like to move Resolutions Number Twelve and Thirteen to immediately following the consent agenda and the approval of minutes of December sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, regular session as proposed.
Second.
That motion with the change has been made. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, we have an agenda. First item on the, first item we have are public comments. Your opportunity to address the city council on non-agenda related items.
Aaron Stacey Roberts, four eleven Almond. I'm back because I want to inform you on what I've done and I'm going to constantly be trying to make movement in this. So the first meeting of the Polk County Board of Supervisors, which was the second I went to and I expressed some of my concerns because I only had probably five minutes down there to do so over the years. And what I got out of that meeting was one of the board members said that they would contact the Ozbuzmen with my concerns of Jody Van Velsen having been a policeman and my landlord intimidator and Charles Tedesco is the one that I had put together with the intel I've got, who was the perpetrator who did that to my daughter. So I'm looking for a collaboration from you. Urbendell has not reached out any and I can understand why, but there will be some movement down there, trust me. What it is, is I need for you all to get together and investigate what is going on because the Ozbuzmen I contacted twenty years ago, I contacted them, I want to say last February after I was getting a threatening text message that said kill me on Martin Luther King's Day. I think I contacted them then and just getting discouraged from past, I didn't go back at them. But what needs to happen here is it needs to be outside of Polk County and Blackhawk County and the Waterloo Police because there are police that have played a part in all counties, in both of these counties. Like I said, Charles Tedesco was the one that I got as perpetrating on my daughter. When I got back to Waterloo, when I mentioned last time I was in a meeting, I said Meyer's name, Mark Myers. And the reason I would say his name like that is because I was around one of the informants that he was handling. And what that informant's job was, at one time was trying to convince me that what I'm saying happened to my daughter, that what she got the exam about didn't happen. And also the same guy was trying to put some guns in my hand too. So I see the dirty part of some of the police that have participated here in this law enforcement and I'm not just spitting names out without having people behind me because there's more to Mark Myers. It was a case up in Sioux City where the judge actually told him, we wish could arrest you and the informant that tried to set the guy up. And he's asked to come down here and speak with me. So what I'm saying this is, is really truly a public safety matter. When we have police officers that have acted out with this conduct, it's still ongoing. Some of the people who were in my daughter's ear and my son's ear have been retired people from Blackhawk County. Blackhawk County employees, I didn't know at the time I would drop my daughter off and that they were in her ear giving her bad information. Time brings about change, people grow. And once this, not a machine or a dead horse, as people call it, once this corrupt organization gets more exposed, there's different ways you have to do it. What my process now is to make the perpetrators tell what my children are scared to tell. So that's what we're focusing on in twenty twenty-five.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council?
Good evening. Rich Curtinbach, two thirty-eight Normandy Street, Waterloo. Here tonight to inform you about a special election coming up January twenty-eighth, the special election to fill an open seat on the Blackhawk County Supervisors. Registered voters can request an absentee ballot now and make requests up and through Monday, January thirteenth. This is going to be unique as a special election. People may not necessarily be able to vote at their regular precinct locations. They are using nineteen voting centers. I have here a list, I'd like to pass that over to all the council members and folks at the board. If you would, take pictures, help spread the word to everyone, these voting centers. You can vote at any one of them on January twenty-eighth, January twenty-eighth. They are interlinked, so can't vote twice. But you can vote at any of those locations in that process. Starting Wednesday, the eighth, early voting in person is starting at the Blackhawk County Courthouse, Elections Office on the second floor. Again, we're concerned about the weather on January twenty-eighth. So if you can vote early, that helps any problem of a snowstorm, my storm, or anything else in the weather that could come up. Out of the nineteen voting locations, five are located in Cedar Falls, eight here in Waterloo, and six in outer cities locations. Other than that, if you would like to go online and request an absentee ballot request, you can go to the county elections website at blackhawkcountyelections.Iowa.gov. And again, that ends on January thirteenth.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Latanya Graves, six zero seven East Down Street, Waterloo, Iowa. And I'm here to talk about the forty-sixth Annual Martin Luther King Junior Banquet that will take place on Sunday, January nineteenth. And so I would like to pass these out, so you will have them. And if you would like to attend, you need to RSVP by Monday, January thirteenth. And my telephone number is on there. Our guest speaker again is Rashonda Young. Our theme is achieving the dream against all odds. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, is there anyone else going a second time?
Sir.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to close public comments.
Do you have anything? Happy New Year, sir.
As well as Happy New Year. I had a, just as a question and a suggestion. I read the bill payments every week and we seem to be buying more and more items from every, all departments through Amazon. And I know it's, it's quick, it's easy, it's just a click to buy something. But I would like to know if it would be possible for us to do a comparison on how much money we're saving on buying through Amazon as opposed to buying local because Amazon does not pay property taxes. Amazon doesn't support the city of Waterloo and the other customers that are, that are buying things on Amazon do not pay local option sales tax because they're not buying it here locally. And we push over and over and over about shop local, shop Waterloo, especially around Christmas time when we have our, you know, shop downtown, you know, shop our local merchants. And, and I just noticed that every, every week we were buying more and more stuff on Amazon and I would sure like to see us make an effort to shop more locally if at all possible.
And then I think there was some justification for that, but maybe we need to have a broader conversation about it publicly as well. I know we just did a shop local thing to support local businesses downtown and throughout the community as well. So I think the Amazon was an attempt to do some cost savings, but we can talk about it a little bit more internally. We'll come back to you. All right, anyone else?
All right, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close public comments.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Public comments closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the addition of one A-one bills payment for December thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. That amount is six million ninety-three thousand, two hundred and ninety-two dollars and ninety-seven cents. And January sixth, twenty twenty-five, one million, six hundred and twenty-five thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars and forty-seven cents.
Second.
All right, the motion has been made. We'll just second. Council comments? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Childs.
Yes.
Mr. Simon.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
All right, thank you. In the audience this evening, we have Mr. Vincent Walker, who's being appointed to the Park Maintenance Two Construction. I think you're in the audience. And by chance, do we have Kyler here as well? All right, well Vince, we want to say congratulations on your appointment. We look forward to a long, happy, incredible work experience for you as well. And we just want to thank you for joining our family. Thank you. All right, and really quickly for those watching, Kyler Fishos has been a, two Equipment Operator, two in the Street Department, so wanted to make note of that. All right, anything on there on some, Mr. Council? Well, let's go to, we were going to do twelve and thirteen.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution directing sale of three million, five hundred and sixty thousand dollars, subject to adjustment per terms of offering general obligation urban renewal bonds series twenty twenty-five A and a resolution directing sale of twenty-eight million, five hundred and ninety thousand, subject to adjustment per terms of offering taxable general obligation urban renewal bonds series twenty twenty-five B.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Mrs. Berger.
Thank you very much. I'm Maggie Berger with Spear Financial. We did have a bond sale today for the city. This is out of your normal timeframe of your capital improvements funding. These were processes that we've been starting in the late fall, going into this new year. The twenty twenty-five A bonds are tax exempt. So you see a little bit lower interest rate there from Fidelity Capital Markets of Boston, Massachusetts. We did have five bids received and the low bid is a three point eight four, nine eight percent. As part of this practice of selling bonds, we did have the city go through the Moody's rating process. This was really a follow-up call since the twenty twenty-four audit is, is not quite yet completed. It's getting there, but not quite complete. You are reaffirmed at the double A-two rating, which is the rating that you've had in the past. This twenty twenty-five A series of bonds does have a twenty-year debt repayment. And on the very last page of that packet for twenty twenty-five A, the bonds are callable after June one of twenty thirty-two. That just protects you from, and enables you to really call in the bonds early if you have the money necessary to do that. The twenty twenty-four B bonds, I want to go back and talk about what we sold in earlier in twenty twenty-four, about nine months ago. Those came in at about a three point five one percent. So this rate is a little bit higher, but I remind you that those rates, that interest rate was based on a twelve-year bond issue. This is a twenty-year bond issue, so we're always going to see a little bit higher interest rate when we got the twenty years. But it makes us happy that actually the coupons or the annual interest rates have come down. They were at a five percent. These are now at four percent for this locked-in twenty twenty-five issue. On the twenty twenty-five B, those are the taxable series. And the difference there is Bond Council, your Allers and Cooney Group, they're the ones who determine taxability of bonds and taxability of bonds has to do with private purpose. All of the, the money tied up in this twenty twenty-five B are based on developments and development agreements that you've recently passed, which have some private purpose with them. And so that's why those are issued at the twenty, at, at the taxable rate. These interest rates actually are very good in comparison to where we were at. We were at a five point three percent in twenty twenty-four and that was a six-year rate. So to have a twenty-year rate and only be at the five point zero two percent and have eleven bidders, you're kind of setting the bar a little high here for going into the spring. But I do want to say most recently in the fall, we were selling six percent interest rates. And as you can see on the winning bid on page two, those interest rates that they're bidding started at a four, seven, five and only go down to a five point five. So again, we're really starting to see the markets coming down. We hope the markets will continue to go down if the Federal Reserve continues to kind of inch away at cutting those interest rates here in the future. So I'd answer any questions, but we would recommend that you would pass both of these resolutions this evening.
Thank you. Council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
Just one question. I know we've been at that AA-two rating. What criteria would we need to meet to move up to the AA-one?
Yep.
And kind of what impact would that have on our interest rates?
Yeah, so factors that would lead to an upgrade of the ratings is on the second page of that. We always highlight what would lead to a downgrade because that's very important to us. A decrease in long-term liabilities to a ratio closer to one hundred and fifty percent of revenues. You're at about two hundred percent of your revenues on that long-term liabilities ratio. If you were able to decrease your long-term liabilities, you may see a ratings upgrade or you would get in the, in the area where they could start to look at you. You'd also have to improve resident income nearing one hundred and twenty percent of the full value per capita, closer to one hundred thousand. So that's one of those demographic areas as part of a rating process that sometimes cities don't have a lot of control over. We've had conversations with the rating agency in the past. You've been at the double A-two rating for about nineteen years now. It's a great rating. There's a double A-one and then there's a triple A. In the state of Iowa, there's only thirteen triple A credits and that's between cities, counties, and school districts. And so we anticipate that, you know, in the future, you may be able to increase that. It probably would be based on maybe issuing a little less debt. But I want to tell you that you're doing that on your CIP. These are things, these are out of the CIP, these are kind of out of our normal type of issuance of debt. We've also had some big issuances of debt according to, you know, the Waterloo Fiber Project coming on and some other things. And so right now, I guess you're spending some money that is going to improve the city overall and maybe that'll help with that demographic if that helps.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, and one, one thing, you know, over the course of years, last twenty, thirty years, sometimes we've forsaken the upgrade and upkeep of some of our buildings so that we wouldn't have our debt hit so hard. But we just come to the point several years ago, I think, when Councilman Bozen may have started, if anybody else was around, where we need to fix up our buildings. We need to start to work towards that because that's a long-term asset. And so we had to fix up our treatment plant. So there's a number of things that have had to happen along the course of time that would increase the amount of debt. But how, how much further can you go without upgrading your facilities? And so, so it, council, any, any other questions or anything?
I'll make one other chime in. It's very difficult to get an upgrade.
I asked.
Like, we don't get there yet. The mayor asks very nicely every time we're on the phone with them. But I will say this, that there, there, once you get into a position where you could be upgraded, it would be probably a four to five-year process where they're going to monitor and make sure that you're in that position to maintain that upgrade. Because they don't like to upgrade or downgrade based on what's happening one time. They want to see that there's a trend of that and that's a change for you.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone from the public with questions? Madam Clerk, roll call vote for twelve and thirteen.
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Childs.
Yes.
Mr. Simon.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Berger. Do we have some signings to do or not as many this time? Okay, all right. Could someone take number one in public hearings?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing and that's for the sale and conveyance of city-owned property located at the northeast corner of the CN Railroad and Levercy Road in the amount of one dollar to International Paper Company, including approval of a development agreement.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to comment on this item on the agenda?
David Jarrett, thirty-one forty-five West Fourth Street. That bonding thing kind of kicked, kicked in with what I, a little bit of what I want to say. We keep getting land or selling land for a dollar, yet now we have in, in this proposal where we would buy the, buy some of the land back for, let me see. And they have a portion of their old building, I guess, or whatever, that the city would pay appraisal price for. We aren't going to get a better bond rating if you keep paying, selling things for a dollar and buying them for what they think they're worth. Hold on a second. We do see some dim light on the property tax increase, or not increase, but property taxes come in in fifteen, ten to twenty years. But that's down the road. She just said it takes a long time to get your, your rating back up. If you keep putting yourself at the same debt level all the time, you're never going to come out of a better ra, come out with a better rating. You've got to stop spending, buying stuff for retail price and selling stuff for a dollar.
Thank you, sir.
Forest Dilavu, seventeen twenty-five Huntington Road. I have similar concerns as to the previous speaker as he did. We are buying or giving sixty-six acres to build this building and whatever. Sixty-six acres is a lot of, lot of ground for an eight hundred thousand square foot building. I don't know how many square foot sixty-six acres is. But if they have extra land, I assume they can sell the land or give it away or do whatever they do after we give it to them if they don't use it. Plus another thirty acres. So we have to add the sixty-six plus the thirty. We're up to close to a hundred acres of land to one developer. And like Dave says, we're going to buy the building, agree to buy the building at an appraised price. Now, who is appraisers? As I see these buildings, if I go to the county courthouse and I look, what we are paying for them and what they're assessed at, there is no way. We bought a building recently that was assessed at eighty and we paid two fifty. If we're going to do this with this building, we just continue to put the taxpayers in a bind. We don't have that kind of money. We don't have that kind of taxpayers. We don't, we don't have that kind of income. It just, we've got to get things under control. Buying and giving away for a dollar is one of the main things you'll hear the people say out here in Waterloo. There is no guarantee of jobs in here that I see. No guarantee of jobs. It's just a building. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone else?
I'll be brief. This is Lisa Scooball, Vice President of Economic Development for Grove Cedar Valley. This is a great project, first of all, and I've got to congratulate Mayor, City Council staff, and even the company for making a significant investment in Waterloo. Over, over the years, many years, we've seen existing businesses continue to expand in Waterloo. And one, the main reason is that Waterloo treats them right and is very business friendly. And even with, in the past, our historic visits with International Paper, they remember a long time ago when the building caught on fire. They were just very appreciative of all the support the city had provided them. So even with new companies we bring in, how appreciative they are of the city's willingness to think outside the box. Now, as far as the acquiring the property on Parker, I don't see this anything different than what the city of Waterloo did for CPM Ross Camp. In fact, Image Point Dignity Apparel came by pretty quickly looking for industrial space and it not being a private transaction, so the city of Waterloo didn't even have to be involved in that. We're going to see a continued increase in new construction surely, but we're also going to see an increased demand of existing industrial facilities. And I just feel that based on having been in that building before, we're going to find another user for it. Maybe it's an existing business or it might be someone new coming into the community. This is a good project that deserves all of our support. Thank you.
Thank you. You got somebody sitting back there with you too, huh? How you doing, Adrian? All right, anyone else from, anyone else with comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral comments.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Oral comments closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to adopt a resolution approving the sale and conveyance of city-owned property located at the northeast corner of CN Railroad and Levercy Road in the amount of one dollar to International Paper Company and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel, do you want me to have Noel speak briefly or would you like to? Mr. Anderson, can you talk about the project for us while we can?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. So yeah, it's, it's definitely a great project for the city of Waterloo to work with International Paper. You know, the potential city costs for this project, you know, we've been, we've been organizing the land out there. Sixty-six acres for a eight hundred thousand square foot building. Our general square footage is one acre per ten thousand square feet. By the time you have a building with a parking lot and some green space and stormwater and a truck turnaround area, this one will have a rail access point as well. That's about the right ratio for, with the additional thirty acres for them to be able to function on the site and give themselves some room for expansion. We previously released the land with the FAA release. We'll be looking at another release here. We're looking at the potential of a rise road to the north. If we built another rise road to the north, obviously we'd get some money with the state. That would open up another probably eighteen acres. The last rise road we did created the CPM project, which is at nine point seven four million right now. So again, we'd have more acreage for future, future projects with the road extension. We would be looking at removing and relocating the fence. So our cost for this project to bring it here is probably, depending upon if we buy their existing site, which is in the agreement that they can ask us to do that, and we'd have an appraisal. The appraisal would be chosen by us and the company mutually agreeable. There's a number of appraisers in the area that can do the work. We had the same agreement in place for CPM. I fully expect someone else to buy it before we would for appraised value. They'll be able to get it a lot cheaper than they could build new. The existing building is a hundred and fifty-four thousand and valued at one point six million for assessed value right now. So this new building is about five times the size of their existing building in this area. Their new building would be, have a minimum assessed value of forty million for even with tax rebates at fifty percent for the first fifteen years. That means we'll still be getting taxes of nine hundred thousand dollars after the rebates. Two hundred and eleven thousand, eight hundred and ninety-six dollars of that would go into the debt service and six hundred and eighty-nine thousand, five dollars would go into the TIF district. So any costs that we'd be spending would be covered by them basically on year one for the payments moving ahead. Our cost probably estimate, again, with the road, with the, their existing building, we're probably ranging from about four million to eight million in costs for us for a new forty million dollar project. They are applying for the state. They did submit an application to the state of Iowa today to note that they are bringing ninety new jobs to the area. Those jobs do meet the qualifications for the state's high-quality job creation program.
Thank you. Counsel.
Mayor. So Noel, we, we have a guarantee of the ninety jobs? Or if they don't get the grant through the state, we don't have a guarantee for the ninety jobs? How does that work?
We do not put the job portion in our development agreement because it's difficult for us to track jobs. The state of Iowa obviously can track them since they pay them state income tax. But any incentives from the state of Iowa would be contingent upon the ninety jobs. Or a portion, if they, if they created fifty jobs instead, the state does have the ability to go back and take some of their incentives back proportionately based on the number of jobs. Ours is based on the tax base being created of the forty million.
Because my concern was, was getting stuck with that property on Parker. That, that, that's my main concern. And I know with the CPM, it was a quick turnaround. And I would hope that we wouldn't get stuck with that property on, on West Parker because I don't know what that appraiser is going to come in at. I, I know that a lot of times it's assessed at one point six and the appraiser, a perfect example is a couple of buildings over off of West Third Street that comes in five times the assessed value, which I, which I hate to see. And then there's a lot of variables that are unknowns, especially in the rail spur. Because that rail spur could cost us anywhere between four hundred thousand and one point five million, depending on how we structure the rail spur, correct?
Correct. We're, we're working with the FAA release based on how the FAA wants to proceed with the movement of the fence for the FAA release area. The further east we can start the spur into their site, the better they can get it aligned with the main CN, make it parallel with that. That'll give them more room for expansion in the, in the, in the future as well. That'll give them more room for expansion in the, in the, in the future as well. So we're definitely working to trying to make that happen, which would be a little bit longer spur and be closer to the million dollar amount or more.
So how, how does that work when it says if there's another business in that industrial park that's going to need a rail spur? That, this, this would be part of it. How, is that, that would also increase it because you'd have to, you can't just have one rail coming into, to, to International Paper. You'd have to have another line that would bypass it, correct?
They're looking at the alignment of that now based on bringing a spur into them and then if another spur could be still be continuing to the north. Obviously this will have 12 to 15 cars per day, so we're also looking at rail traffic in that area and not blocking streets and all that to the airport. So if, if, if it works out that we can't get a further spur going to the north, then we'll have to abandon that area, I guess, and have this large project with this rail spur.
Okay. Well, I do appreciate all the work that's gone into it and I appreciate the fact that if we could bring 90 quality jobs to our area is really important because we entered into so many development agreements and, and we don't have a performance bond on development agreements that you have to abide by this, this, and this. But the fact that we could bring in 90 jobs is, is, is really a positive thing for us. And hopefully with all the growth we have out there, that's, that's also a, you know, a big plus that's going on out that entire area. Thank you for, for all your work on it and your staff.
All right. Anyone else? All right. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
Like to adopt a, make a motion to adopt the following resolution, the resolution approving a development agreement with International Paper Company for the construction of 800,000 square feet industrial building with tax rebates for 15 years at 50% with a minimum assessed value of $40 million and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
Motion has been made with the second. Counsel, I want to thank you too for talking to staff, getting the answers, communicating with your constituents also. So very much appreciated. Good job team. Madam Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Uh, can we go to four, five, and six, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
Like to make a motion to approve the following resolutions. First is a resolution approving an acceptance of a deed and donation of real property to the City of Waterloo from Said Mokdal and Samaya Sheikh Ali Sufi for property located at 406 Randall Street and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. Number five, a resolution approving a request by Robson Homes, Inc. for the preliminary plat of Prairie Meadow Estates first edition, a 49 lot residential subdivision in R-3 multiple residence district located east of Omaha Avenue. And number six, a resolution approving a development agreement with EA, E&amp;A Properties, LLC for the construction of a new single-family house in an info lot located at 835 Jane Street, including a $5,000 influence incentive upon substantial completion and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel, any comment? I mean, any comments, anyone?
David Dreyer, 3145 West Forest Street. My question is on number four. Are the taxes on this property up to date and will they have to be brought up to date before we accept it? I see it says needs rehab or tear down. What is the condition of the property right now that, that statement would be in there? If it's in need of a tear down, then why don't we just wait for a 657A situation to come up and not have to spend any money? Well, we'd have to spend the money to tear it down, but I guess the big questions are, are the taxes up to date? If they aren't, then it should have been a 657A already. And is it, has it been looked at to see if it's got to be torn down rather than saying rehab or tear down?
All right. Thank you. Mr. Anderson?
Well, I don't know if that's Mrs. Schreider. Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. You know, it's a difficult one to say if it needs to be rehabbed or torn down. We, we've gone and looked at buildings before and thought they could be rehabbed and then didn't, didn't get any bidders, so we tore them down and we went and looked at others before thinking no one would rehab this and then they have. So it's, it's really just a matter of, we'll find out when we send it out for RFP to find out if anyone's interested in rehabbing it. If they're not, we will tear it down and it is in the Church Row area, so it's one of our priority areas to get new housing in there. We have interest for new construction in that area. I believe the taxes were paid on it, so this will be similar to a 657A without going through the core process.
And they were paid.
So Noel, we, we're partnering with Habitat in that area. Is that one that they're interested in or they have to put together?
I believe Habitat would be interested in it if we tear it down for new construction.
Oh, okay.
I'm not sure they were interested in it for rehab at this point.
So RFP it out to see who's interested in that. If not, we can work with them and potentially we tear it down and they put some taxable value right back on it.
Correct.
Okay. Counsel, questions on four, five, or six?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Not necessarily a question, but just a thank you because this was one of the, well, on Randall, that was one of the properties that I had sent to Marty pretty early in my term, just trying to figure out what was going on with it because it looks terrible in Church Row. So thank you all for getting this on the agenda to get this taken care of.
Thank you. Teamwork. All right. Madam Clerk, roll call vote on four, five, and six.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Could someone take seven, eight, and nine? Mr. Bozen?
I'd be more than happy to.
Well, he beat you to the punch last time, so.
Well, I wasn't even going to try what, what Mr. Nichols did because I couldn't pronounce the names. I'd like to make a motion to adopt the following resolutions. Resolution approving the suspension of the civil service hiring practice for entrance positions as authorized by Iowa Code Section 400.12A for the time period of January 7, 2025 to January 6, 2026. Number eight is adopting a resolution approving the 2025 sports and aquatics program rates. And number, that's number eight. And number nine is a resolution approving an agreement with professional services with Alliance of Minneapolis, Minnesota, not to exceed the amount of $12,300 in conjunction with the FY 2025 IDOT CSVI terminal interior vision plan project and authorizing the Director of Aviation to execute said document.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Is there anyone with questions on these items?
David Dreyer, 3145 West Forest Street. On number seven, I don't know what that means. Does it mean that there's no more testing, no more physicals, or we're just suspending hiring period? Or are the requirements for all of this just going to be foregone?
All right. We will, if that's your question, we will have Ms. Gerhart step up and give us just a very quick 100-foot view of this. I know we had a work session and some changes were made to tweak that, so.
Ms. Gerhart, Assistant HR Director. There will still be testing, the hiring process. Right now, we have a civil service commission that approves job descriptions and lists and we will no longer need their approval for entry-level positions, but we will still keep the profit, process for promotional positions. This Iowa Code Section change will allow us to go through the hiring process just a little bit faster.
All right. Thank you. And I know, Mr. Bozen, you had an opportunity to sit down.
I did.
I believe you did.
I did have an opportunity to sit down and I, and I appreciate that opportunity and, and that's why I was reluctant at the work session. I'm in favor of it now. That meeting that we had with HR and with the Police Department and Fire Department and, and the complexities and the difficulty of maintaining a list and, and the ability to get people processed quicker and we're losing candidates because of that. We're not really changing anything as far as our civil service guidelines go, except for the fact that, of how we're processing the hiring lists. It would allow the Police Department, if they, if they chose to, to test every two months as opposed to waiting until the, a list is, is completely expired. Now, the list, the list will have an expiration date of each test, but they'll be able to test more often, which gives them a better hiring pool, which I think is important. And it's the same thing with the Fire Department. Because of the delay in the hiring that we had in the, in the past because of the delays with the civil service, you know, we ended up not being able to hire a specific number of firefighters and, and just in a two-week period, it cost us a number of cash days in overtime because of, because of our inability to staff. So this, this is going to affect their budget, it's going to affect their ability to hire, it's going to affect their ability to hire the best qualified candidates or to get more qualified candidates on board. So I'm 100% behind this. And the other thing that we need to remember is this is a one-year expiration date. So if we decide that this isn't, isn't working out for us, we can go back to the way we did it January of next year. So I fully support it.
And it puts people out on the streets a little bit quicker too, which is what we need, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'm, I'm glad that you explained that, Dave, because I, I was a no on this because I wasn't convinced. I don't know if that information was made available to everybody. If it was, I missed it. I like the idea of being able to go next year and change it if we find it's not beneficial. Is that number going to be, are, are we going to have some info next year when this comes back up to see how beneficial? I, it would be, that would be very nice to have so we can say, hey, we, we captured these, these employment opportunities better. That would be great.
Yeah, we can, we can have that information, but we can also have the both the chiefs make a presentation too to see what's happening, like actually within the departments as well, so.
But that's, that sounds great that, that you did the work and found out what was, that was good, so, um, yes.
There was a, an email that was sent out to all the counsel with, with some available dates to meet with HR and the Police Department and Fire Department. And, and I know it conflicts with a lot of people's work schedule, but I was, I was just fortunate enough to be able to, to make one of those meetings and it was extremely in, you know.
Thank you. Thank you for doing that.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Could someone take 10 and 11?
Mr. Mayor for 10.
Sir?
Sorry. Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution approving a professional service agreement with AECOM Technical Services Incorporated of Waterloo, Iowa in the amount of 4,000, 400,000, $425,900 in conjunction with the rehabilitate runway 1836 project, FAA AIP 3-19-0094-0XXS 2025 and authorizing the mayor to execute said document and a resolution approving a professional services agreement with AECOM Technical Services of Waterloo, Iowa in the amount of $158,900 in conjunction with the replace aircraft passenger boarding bridge project, FAA AIP 3-19-0094-XXS 2025 and authorizing the mayor to execute said document.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Yes, sir?
David Dreyer, 3145 West Forest Street. Are these particular items covered by the Aviation Administration or FAA or?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I couldn't hear his head nod.
Yes. Thank you for your question, sir. All right. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'm very happy we're getting this passenger boarding bridge taken care of. This has been a constant conversation in the airport board for the past three years that I've been on council, so I'm very happy to finally see this moving.
Appreciate it. Anyone else? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Uh, can we go to four, five, and six, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
Like to make a motion to approve the following resolutions. First is a resolution approving an acceptance of a deed and donation of real property to the City of Waterloo from Said Mokdal and Samaya Sheikh Ali Sufi for property located at 406 Randall Street and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.